Good evening.
Good evening.
This meeting is now convened. The time is 5:31 PM. Tammy, please let the record show that all board members are present with the exception of Dr. Mohammed Kani. Moving into the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Stephen, I guess, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Moving on to Agenda Item 1.03. Our next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. A recommended action is that the Board approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion that way approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Danielle, are there any comments or questions? Okay, at this time, let's vote.
I'm going to tell the rest. Maryam is an I.
It didn't come up for you. You just put your down.
It's not coming up. I second it.
Danielle.
Danielle second. Maryam just said I. He isn't long, it's not long done yet. Mine's not.
I've got everyone locked down.
Mine's, mine's not pulling up. I'm an I.
I'm going to get out and go back. Okay. You're fine.
You mean you're going to go outside and come back?
Okay. Very good. Motion passes and we'll be moving on. Public comments. We have now come to the portion of our meeting where we hear from speakers. Please listen as I read the following statement on our public comment portion. The Board of Education welcomes comments about the issues being discussed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public, but we will not comment or engage with the public during the meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment period. The Board Chair will call on individuals in the order in which they signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It is inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in an open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed to the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or at the district office. If you have materials that you want to share, please place them in the tray on the podium and they will be distributed to board members following the meeting. Please also note that if you're planning to speak, there will be a timer on each screen on each side of the room to help you know when your time is almost up. So if you'll, please keep an eye on that. It'll help us to move on. So at this time, our first speaker will be Laura Mullins.
Good evening. Tonight, I come to you as the elected representative of the SNEA Education Support Professional Groups, covering the hourly employees in the custodial, maintenance, grounds, supply center, secretarial, support staff, nutrition service, professional nurses, and police service departments. As you may know, the district has announced it will discontinue annualized pay for almost 1,000 employees next year. I'm here to advocate against this change that will potentially cost us a detrimental amount of loyal employees. While I understand this change was requested by the representatives of the transportation employees, the desires of one small group should not be blanketed across hundreds of others. Although it is commendable that input from 112 bus drivers was listened to, although not all of them were in support, no one asked for the input of the other impacted groups totaling hundreds more. Because of this, SNEA did. Of the impacted members, 96% of them were opposed. This is not due to lack of education or understanding on their part. This is because it is simply not what they want. While I think everyone understands the gross amount of pay does not change, the amount they depend on each month does. The monthly checks will be dependent on the days each month in which school is in session, ranging from 21 days to only 15 days, barring any additional days taken for inclement weather. This does not include the months of August, June, and July, in which they will receive little to no income. It is important to also remember, while their paychecks will vary, their monthly commitments do not. All of this creates some, creates income volatility, which has been shown to have significant negative impacts that reach far beyond the family's finances. While budgeting is the ideal situation and the recommended solution by SPS, it simply cannot address many of the financial hardships our employees face throughout the year. I'm not sure if administration has forgotten or has never experienced what it's like to live paycheck to paycheck, because if they did, they would understand the realities of their situations. While there is the potential for additional work at SPS like summer school, this cannot accommodate all of the employees impacted. I have heard the district make suggestions from putting our kitchen staff on mowers and paint crews, to their plans to lock secretaries into 10 or even 12-month contracts, again making decisions without employee input. Several years ago, a different SPS administration also wanted to make this change, and that is understandable, as it is easier for the HR department. However, they chose to listen to their employees' needs and did not make the change. I'm hopeful this administration will do the same. There are solutions that would respect the desires of both sides, primarily making it a choice for the current and future employees. We know this is possible with the current system, as they're already using both pay calendars as they started paying bus drivers on the non-annualized pay last month. With the much anticipated oracle, this should be nothing more than a simple programming option. Again, I encourage you to listen to your employees and make SPS not only one of the largest employers in Springfield, but one of the best. Thank you.
Rhonda Latt Frye.
Well, good evening, and I want to thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. And this opportunity, I come tonight as a representative for over 400 of the support staff and paraprofessionals in our district. As you are aware, the district administration has made the decision to discontinue annualized pay for employees across our district in the next coming school year. I would like to speak against this decision and the impact that it will have. When I made my commitment to become an SPS employee almost five years ago, it was based on the ideal that our district was committed to its employees, its teachers, community, and ultimately our students that we serve each day. Myself, like many other employees, were excited this year when we were given the impression that our district valued each of our employees' stories. As was shouted from this stage, each one of you are a vital component in the function of effectiveness to our SPS community. I ask SPS, is this still true? Today, I would like to share with you how some stories of this new decision will affect our community. Ms. A. shares her story today, saying that with a new pay schedule, I will lose my daughter's disability checks. Those checks are what makes it possible for me to work for the district. If I make over 2,000 per month, no disability. It is calculated monthly, not yearly, and it's not prorated. I'll either get some or all or none, depending on my paycheck. I adopted twins in 2018, both disabled, and I will lose all benefits if my pay changes. It's not a budgeting issue, but a consistent pay issue, one that I cannot afford to lose. This is my story. Ms. B. states, I came to the district because of the 12-month pay and having summers off to be with my children. I would not have been able to do this if I was only a nine-month employee. I do work summer school, as encouraged strongly to do, but this is not extra money, as suggested. It covers necessities that my regular pay does not. As a single-income household, this change will be devastating. I've been with the district 26 years, and one of the things that keeps me here is the 12-month pay. Also, the department I am in is already shorthanded, and this annualized pay is taking away many of my coworkers, and I would leave the district for other jobs, which has already been shorthanded. Mr. Z writes, as an employee that works hard and shows up every day, dealing with many difficult situations in the classroom, this is disheartening and certainly makes an employee feel devaluated. As support professionals, we show up with heart in mind, focused on students and staff we serve, often being the least bit recognized and appreciated, and we would do it day and day again. Ms. F. also responded, stating, as hard-working employee, I am forced to decide how I am going to feed my family, a family already struggling in difficult economic times and already scarce budget. For those employees like myself who rely on government benefits such as food stamps, SNAP, SSI, and Medicaid, we would not qualify for them any longer since all of these are based on monthly income. This will go away for my family and many other families in the district. SPS, I ask, what kind of ending are you going to write for your employee stories? Thank you.
Kyler Sherman Wilkins. Kyler Sherman Wilkins. Kyler here. Okay, moving on. Barbara Dersheimer.
Hi. Hello, I'm Barbara Dersheimer, and I am a paraprofessional in special education for the district. This is my 20th year. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here today because myself and the majority of my fellow paraprofessionals are unhappy with the decision to end annualized pay. I feel the explanations we've been given are short-sighted and do not take into account how this would impact us or the educational environment. Many of us struggle to budget our personal finances throughout the year. We are expected to provide consistent, reliable support, but the nature of the school calendar cannot provide us stable, consistent, hourly work throughout the year. This is what annualized pay corrects for. The holiday breaks and summer that we considered a perk and looked forward to will now be a source of anxiety and financial stress. We are already worried what will happen when Christmas break, high utility bills, and personal property tax bills hit all at once, especially when we have 12 months of deductions coming out of nine months of inconsistent pay. Many of us have a large amount of medical, dental, and vision insurance. When these are deducted at breaks, our checks will be minimal. In the summer, we will have five consecutive pay periods without pay. I'm not sure how anyone on our pay scale can budget for that. A lot of paraprofessionals I know are single mothers. They live paycheck to paycheck. Annualized consistent pay is extremely important to them. Another worry we all have to, is that we all have to get, sorry, another worry we all have is getting approved for loans, home loan, car loan, with the pay inconsistency. Who will loan out money with inconsistent monthly pay? Even for those who can get some of the limited summer school positions, it does not cover more than a fraction of this huge gap. Obviously, many will seek supplemental income sources, but who out there is going to hire hundreds of short-term temporary workers? The best, most dependable staff will likely be compelled to find and retain more dependable, consistent employment and pay where they feel their needs are being listened to. The argument that ending annualized pay will make it easier to hire new employees may backfire if turnover increases. From my position, I can see a degraded educational environment if we lose experienced support staff. I can't help but think there has to be a better solution for new employees that does not put more stress on existing experienced staff. I've always loved and appreciated benefits of working for SPS. Even when health insurance costs went up, I understood that change. But in this economic environment of unpredictable inflation, annualized pay is and has always been the best benefit of my employment with SPS.
Okay, that concludes our public comment section. Our board will be moving on to 3.01 Technology Integration Committee Presentation. Dr. Nicole Holt and Mr. Bruce Douglas will present.
You'll be confused, I have a different partner in crime tonight than you're used to seeing up here. So, Mr. Douglas and I are happy to be with you tonight to share an update on the work of the Technology Integration Committee. You'll recall, this was work that really spurred and began in the spring of 2022, right at this very table, about some concerns, and this is kind of what has gone on from the time of that original dialogue through the last couple of months. So here's the agenda of where our time will be spent tonight. It really lives in four buckets. We'll start just with a reminder about what we were charged with in a small timeline. Mr. Douglas will then move into the current status, just to give you some overarching information around current technology that lives inside of SPS. Then we'll move straight into what the committee, who the committee was, and what their recommendations are for administration moving forward. And then we'll really talk about what that looks like from a monetary perspective, as well as the future work that will need to be done to make sure that things happen as they should. So we'll dive right in. This is just a slide to orient you to the work that has gone on. So we did some initial focus groups with leaders just as we closed out the spring semester and went into summer. We knew that there was some intentional training that needed to be provided to our staff as they came back to us in the fall. We also worked over the summer and into the early fall to form the committee and schedule several meetings with that group that would help guide this work. And then that brings us to today, which is the update we committed to providing you in February. I just want to situate the work that was already started and now lives as a piece of our current strategic plan that we adopted in December. So it is under governing priority one, which is large, success-ready students, and it lives in strategy C of one of the initial objectives. So just as we orient to where the priorities lie, much of our work always aligns to the strategic plan, but I just wanted you to, you to be reminded of that piece.
So I will kind of go through where we currently stand with technology in the 2022-2023 school year, and this is information that we shared with our committee as well to ensure that there's clarity of what technology exists within SPS. So for our student technology, we have three major buckets that we put our technology into as we think about how to provide the needed resources. So first are our personal devices that we provide to all students. So our early childhood students receive iPad sets in the classroom. Kindergarten students receive iPad sets in the classroom as well, in a one-to-one situation, so they all have access. Our first through fifth grade students all have classroom Chromebook sets, meaning each student has access to a Chromebook. And then currently, our sixth through 12th grade students have a Chromebook that goes home with them. We still provide 1,000 hotspots to our students, so as they go home and they're in need of internet access, they're able to request that through the library. And then finally, we provide a variety of supplemental technology, meaning that at our elementary schools, there's other technology besides just the Chromebooks and just the iPads. So we have kindergarten Chromebook parts currently, so our kindergarteners are able to utilize things like Galileo and other assessments. Additionally, we have iPad sets that can be checked out for other uses throughout the rest of those schools. And then as we get especially into the upper-grade levels, we have industry-specific types of technology. So at our high schools, we have things like journalism and media Mac labs that allows those students to actively use Photoshop, Adobe Creative Cloud, and engage with those in these three specific curriculum items. So as we kind of look at that strategy and we think about what is the right device in all of those buckets, this kind of comes into play. So it's a balance of how do we maintain the cost and maintenance of each device? How do we ensure that our teachers and students have access to the technology they need for their curriculum and ensure kind of just equity across the system? And so as we think about Chromebooks, they have the lowest cost of maintenance across all devices, and they're able to work with the majority of our curricular items. And so as we have teachers planning around using technology in that classroom, they have consistency. They know what to use, they know what's available, and as we look at our curricular items, they're available. So then as we think about those more specific industry needs, that's when we start getting into Windows devices, Apple devices, and also iPads. So that's just a very high-level overview of the types of devices we provide and what their capabilities are. So then we also looked at what technology our teachers have access to. So currently, all of our teachers have a touchscreen laptop and a variety of accessories to them, so using an external monitor for doing data entry. In our elementary schools, we're currently converting from smart boards and projectors over to clear-touch interactive flat panels that are on stands, and we've seen this in some of our newer buildings. They have flexibility to move around their classrooms and also engage their students in new ways. And we'll be working on our secondary schools being upgraded in our audiovisual equipment going forward. And then all teachers have access to document cameras. So that's kind of the state of technology as it exists in SPS.
So that will help as we move into really what the work of the committee looked like and what recommendations they brought forward after their work. So you saw earlier the four quadrants and boxes, but here's a breakdown by timeline so you can kind of orient to how that looked across the time that we were together. So in May, we did bring together focus groups of mainly principals and just identified challenges and strengths to our current integration model. That was followed up by, that guided us into teacher training and gathering more robust feedback from the users of the technology. So we'll kind of unpack the statistics of that and what we found here in a couple minutes. Then began the work of the committee. That was really internal stakeholder-focused, and we did lots of things in that committee, but primarily it was about feedback, what is happening across our state, and then what are national trends that we need to be mindful of as we think about the work moving forward. That committee recommendation then got district-level review, which included not only our cabinet level, but also executive leadership team. And then that led us to the report that you are seeing tonight. So when we think about Activate and getting more rich teacher feedback, that occurred at the beginning of the year. Activate is our professional learning day that occurs as teachers come back from summer break, and we certified or we surveyed all K-12 certified teachers. And so 555 was the end for that participation, and you can see both the strengths and opportunities that were listed here. So what we can tell you is this is in high alignment to what we heard from leaders, which is really what guided us to provide some initial training at Activate that then also gave us more feedback as we took it to the committee. You can see things that we expected to see around strengths. We saw adaptive capabilities specifically in Chromebooks meet curricular needs. I'll just call out, because leaders told us in the spring that the device my students have is supportive of the learning that's happening, and that was echoed in what our teachers said, that the capabilities that we need for what they're doing are sufficient with the device they have. We didn't ask specifically about that, but it surfaced in both places. And then I think opportunities are likely not a surprise to you. These are some of the things that people at this very board table have surfaced. And so we did have a time where there was far too much emphasis and time being spent on the device. And so how are we going to support that moving forward was really the committee knew part of their work. Additionally, ongoing teacher training will play out in just a little bit, so I just want to surface that as an ongoing opportunity that teachers mentioned here. So it was a priority for us. We knew the committee was going to take on work, but we also realized that we needed to put some things into place as the committee was doing that work as we set up the year. You'll recall that we made some elementary device changes prior to the close of the school year, with devices at all elementary schools staying on campus. So that work happened ahead of this, but as they came back, we wanted to be sure that we spelled out that really technology is utilized for these two purposes, right? We want to help support teachers with intentionality, with integration, with collaboration, and with application of how to use devices. And then that is, it is really designed to elevate and support students' engagement and their critical thinking. We want to engage them in that critical thinking piece and use technology to do that in some cases. So the guidelines we moved forward with were that across the school day, in elementary, we didn't want to see any more than 20% of time spent on a device. And we were specific at the elementary level that really, that time should be spent in either guided practice, right, utilizing the adaptive software that's already provided, and then some level of independent practice. So we were pretty specific about that. The same was true for secondary. We, the, the percentage is listed there for you, 30%. Now what we know at the secondary level is that's very course-specific. That's why we pushed it across the school day, instead of saying, in this course use this much, or in this course use this much, because there are courses that simply lend themselves to more use of technology. Bruce mentioned journalism, business, et cetera. And so we had to make some of the, we had to give teachers some autonomy in those specific instances. But this is the, this is what we communicated at the onset of this year. So let's talk a little bit about the technology committee. So this was a committee of 31 members. You can see the distribution and breakdown. Almost half of our members were teachers for this committee, which is important. We also had representation from our union, as well as district-level support, meaning coaches that are in the field with our teachers, curriculum coordinators that help support integration of that, as well as some executive directors and directors. Obviously, principals, but you can see the end for teachers there as well. And here are the topics that crossed our three meetings. So it was really about what feedback do we already have and what does that mean? How does it compare to the experiences of committee members? What's happening statewide related to technology? What are our counterparts utilizing? What models are they implementing? How is it going? And then what might be some integration and digital citizenship models that we can lean into and look at as options for integration? So these are the four prioritized recommendations that surfaced from our committee. It was really about adoption, clear adoption of a technology integration model and a digital citizenship curriculum. So if you'll recall, when we started and brought devices into our system, we did not formally adopt a model at that time. We utilized parts from various models that were still research-based, but we didn't say, this is what we're doing in SPS. And the digital citizenship, the digital citizenship piece, say that three times fast, really lived auxiliary to the curriculum, right? So here's how you might use your device when you're teaching business, but now I'm going to step over here and I'm going to teach you about digital citizenship. So it felt outside of the core curriculum in prior. So when this committee came together, several of those teachers and leaders experienced that and said, it would just be so much more helpful if we were clear on what the model is. The second one was about ed tech support. Who's going to help with the integration work if we adopt this model? So that became almost a secondary priority to the model. And then we talked specifically about two different age bands, kindergarten and middle school, and what strategies, device strategies might need to be in place to support those two areas of concern. So we'll unpack each. So the integration model, we looked at several, but the one that the committee finally landed on and wanted to bring forward is ISTI, which stands for the International Standards for Technology Education. So when you think about research-based and longstanding, this is the longest established organization in the world, so it's international in the world, that is about technology integration and support. It is also a model that has both the integration model pieces as well as the digital citizenship pieces. So I already alluded to the fact that those two things lived siloed before, and so when teachers saw something, teachers and leaders saw something that was aligned, that spoke to them. When you think about how we've been very succinct in our priorities, that was something that resonated with them. So ISTI outlines lots of things, but one thing that they do provide districts guidance on is some essential conditions. Really, this is just, do you have these things in place? How can we support you as you begin to integrate a model into your system? So I just wanted you to be aware, those were some high-level conditions that we talked through at the committee and that are a part of the model. One of the brightest pieces, I think, to this particular model is that they have established standards, both on the student side of the house. So this, this should look very familiar to you when you think about standard-based teaching and what we've been talking to you about when we come up related to curriculum and what we implement. They also have standards that align to what the student should know and be able to do relative. So that feels very similar to what teachers are already implementing and the structure they're already utilizing. And they also have teacher standards. So when we think about the academic priorities and how we are helping teachers to understand how their work is aligned to, say, the teacher standards that they also are evaluated on, ISTI has examples and models for how that would look as well. So that really was something that people responded positively to on the committee. Before I move further on this, I do want to honor the fact that people in the room were in, on the committee, especially in the last meeting as we were making and bringing forward the recommendations that would come, both to the executive team as well as to the board, they talked a lot about pace. So when we think about integration and bringing something on, when we've, we're in a time right now where we've been very clear about what we're prioritizing, a concern that teachers expressed was, if we then shift our focus over in this direction, do we lose sight of what forward momentum and motion is happening? And so they just cautioned that as we plan, to be very mindful of setting clear expectations of the when, of the who's responsible, and of the how long it will take to truly implement. Basically, not a snap your fingers and now it's happening moment, but being just really intentional of how we integrate, which we thought was good. So recommendation two lives around staffing. So you've heard me talk a lot about siloing. It was important to the committee that two technology integration coordinators that would situate in the curricular house under the executive director of So when we think about integration and bringing something on, when we've, we're in a time right now where we've been very clear about what we're prioritizing, a concern that teachers expressed was, if we then shift our focus over in this direction, do we lose sight of what forward momentum and motion is happening? And so they just cautioned that as we plan to be very mindful of setting ex, clear expectations of the when, of the who's responsible, and of the how long it will take to truly implement. Basically, not a snap your fingers and now it's happening moment, but being just really intentional of how we integrate, which we thought was good. So recommendation two lives around staffing. So you've heard me talk a lot about siloing. It was important to the committee that two technology integration coordinators that would situate in the curricular house under the executive director of academics would be important. And the primary work that those individuals would do would be really about curating a list of software platforms that truly align and support the implemented curriculum. So it's not any of this going out and finding things, but it's, here's a list, we've vetted it, it aligns to our curriculum, and here are the places that you integrate it. It's really about ensuring that what we bring in that is technology-related is aligned to our core curriculum and that we can support teachers in doing the background work of that so they don't have to go look for it themselves. So those two coordinators would be dedicated in a K-5 band to support elementary and a 612 band to support secondary, which is a similar model that we use in our curriculum team. Recommendation three is about a middle school device strategy. It has been surfaced multiple times that perhaps our middle school students should not be taking devices home, similar to what we put into place for elementary, and the committee agreed with that recommendation. They believe that the one-to-one model with Chromebooks staying onsite at the middle school is preferred. And so what we know if we implement that and bring it forward is that it will require some different charging options at the middle school and that we will still have instances when those students will need to check out a device, whether that's based on a course or just a student need. And so of course, we would make that available if that need presented itself. And the final recommendation is around kindergarten device strategy. So we have talked a lot with our kindergarten teachers about what is the most suitable device to help our youngest learners. You heard Mr. Douglas talk earlier about what they do have in kindergarten, and we did hear a strong support for shifting from one to what, one, shifting away from iPads and to a touchscreen Chromebook. And that is for lots of reasons, but we want, that's the device that they will eventually be utilizing as they move through SPS. And so getting them acquainted to that earlier, we thought would be supportive. It also is better aligned to both our assessment platforms as well as some of our adaptive software, and it just gives ease of access for them. We would not get rid of iPads, but redistribute them so that they could still be utilized as independent practice or in station rotation or corners.
So here's what that will look like with those recommendations for technology next year. So starting with what are some of those financial impacts of those recommendations? So with our middle schools, we would anticipate that we need between 225 and 250 charging carts. And that's not placing one in every classroom in our middle schools, that's placing one in the homerooms where they'll start and end the day to be able to pick up their device and use throughout that day. So we estimate that cost of 575,000. Then we have our educational technology coordinators, so two of those with salary benefits, we would estimate at 175,000. And then finally, investing in ISTI. So there's a membership, there's conferences, and there's also training materials available through ISTI to best help us with that integration, and we estimate that to be at a cost of around $40,000. And so with those recommendations, here's what it would look like for our student technology. So the items circled in red there are the pieces that change. So our kindergarten would move from iPad classroom sets to classroom sets of touchscreen Chromebooks. Our first grade through eighth grade, shifting from fifth, will now have classroom Chromebook sets. We'll reduce that number of hotspots as we have fewer devices going home. And then last, we'll shift from Chromebooks on carts for kindergarten classrooms to iPad sets being utilized throughout our elementary. So as we look at kind of shifting those devices around, this is what the future state would look like. And then finally, here's what our refresh cost would look like as we anticipate this shift and we look at what is that life cycle replacement for our technology. So for our student devices, we would first purchase the kindergarten Chromebooks, the touchscreen Chromebooks, and then we would continue the refresh cycle at our high school by providing new devices to our incoming freshmen. That would come into that cost right there at the 1.2 million. And then we are due for a staff device refresh. So all of our certified staff, so that covers our teachers, our counselors, our principals, anyone with a certification, is due for a refresh this next year. And that's planned as part of our capital forecast, and that comes in just under $3 million as well. So what happens next with the technology integration really comes into these four buckets. First is happening with our leadership development around those ISTI standards. How do we acquaint our leaders, our principals, our coaches with that integration model, but also that digital citizenship model? At the same time, looking at that teacher professional development and that classroom implementation of ISTI as well. Those educational technology coordinators will be key in both of those items, but also in curating that district software catalog. Then finally, just looking at establishing a committee that is ongoing for our educational technology. How do we ensure that year-over-year, we're reviewing the technology that is provided, how it's implemented in the classroom so that we're utilizing those best practices and utilizing research-based models? And with that, we'll raise questions.
Okay, questions?
There were no questions. Keep moving.
Okay.
We have about a million.
What? We have limited time.
I don't have a million.
Prioritize.
Right.
Seriously? I've waited a long time for this.
I know, we waited a long time. We've all waited a little bit of time for this. I really do respect that. But I think we, at one time, we said we would limit the minutes of questions, so a million questions for an hour is not fair.
I didn't mean a million. That was just figurative.
Okay.
Okay. I understand. This is very, very important. Okay.
I'll let you start.
No.
Well, I have some questions with regards to the iPads in the kindergarten. I was under the assumption that we had agreed that we were going to go to, we were going to move away from the iPads and the Chromebooks from grades K through 2, and we were going to go to paper, pencil to paper. That's what I understood. Danielle's going to take her hand there a little bit.
That was not.
That's what I thought we had understood. And then we thought, then we were looking at K, or 3 to 5, that we're going to have Chromebooks, and we were going to limit them taking the Chromebooks home. And then we were going to take and limit, put a, put a time on the Chromebooks where they can access that after, I think it was eight o'clock or something at night. And so here's what I see, and so this is what I'm questioning is, is if we're getting iPads to K through, you know, kindergarten, that doesn't jive with me when it comes to put and pencil to paper and having books in the classroom. You look puzzled over there, and I'm fine. I'm just, I just want some rationale here because that's what I remember, and it seems like we're going back to iPads and Chromebooks again.
I don't remember that.
You don't remember that?
I think maybe where the disconnect is, last year, last spring, when we discussed this, we discussed, like I said, the Chromebooks are at the elementary level, not going home. We still utilize pen, pen and paper or pencil and paper for various activities, but students were going to still have access to technology. Purpose of the committee this past year was to focus on how much utilization of technology in the classroom, because that was a concern about over-usage in previous years, but never to completely eliminate the technology at any grade level. It's about access and utilization.
And I understand that technology is necessary. It was just, at least beginning at the third grade level, and the reason why we were at that specific grade level with technology was because they needed to have that, that knowledge to be able to navigate with a Chromebook so they could take the map testing. Because you don't map test from K to 2, do you?
So remember our new universal screener, we assess starting at kindergarten? And so students needing access, and so that, that's why the recommendation is from the committee to move away from the iPads and make sure those students in kindergarten first grade have access to Chromebooks so that they know, there were struggles last August and September when students started to take the assessments because they didn't understand how to utilize the equipment. And so that's why the recommendation is coming from the committee that we needed to still introduce those. Once again, not use them all day long, throughout the entire class time, but to still have that access.
Another question would be, is like from, say, the 9 through 12. Are we still using Chromebooks in those grade levels?
Yes.
It seems to me that that is kind of outdated to the extent, like, I'll give you an example. I'm in the business community. We don't use Chromebooks at all. And so trying to help our 9 through 12 grade students, is Chromebooks essential enough to prepare them for the business world when they get outside of high school, when they graduate, you know? I think that maybe a PC, like the Microsoft 365 to be utilized, did that be utilized on a Chromebook, 365?
Yes. And so I just want to make sure, actually, let Bruce speak to that.
PC. Could you? Tell us that. Well, because I don't, I don't understand the question.
No, I think that's an excellent question, actually. So M365 with Microsoft, as they're discontinuing Office next year, is available on Chromebooks. Currently, what we utilize for productivity, though, is the Google suite. So that's where we use Google Bird and the Excel equivalent of Sheets, and then also Slides, which is one of PowerPoint, because that's consistent across all students. So they all have that collaborative environment within Google. Where we start to utilize the Windows devices, especially at the high school, are those supplemental devices that are in our applications classrooms in our business labs, and then also whenever we get a specific pieces like video editing, image editing, we have dedicated devices that are not Chromebooks, which we'll utilize there. But the Chromebooks allow all teachers to know, the student has this device, I can plan around this. As we adopt curriculum, it's all cloud-based at this point, so they're utilizing the web routers to access it, whether it would be on a Windows device or Chromebook.
And we were intentional, right, to ask our leaders and our teachers, and what we heard over time, right, and they're going to be the ones we, we listen to, is, this is the device that is sufficient for meeting the learning needs. And when we talk to our counterparts across the state, that is the device that majority of them also utilize for all grade levels in their systems. So we did a little bit of homework on that, right, to make sure we weren't the outlier and to ensure that our teachers, if our teachers were saying to us, "This isn't meeting our need and my students don't have access, they aren't accomplishing the skills that they need at their grade level or as they leave us," that we, I think we would be having a different conversation. But we want to ground that in what we know our counterparts like us are doing and what our, our internal stakeholders are telling us.
Thank you.
Okay, the PC versus Chromebook, wouldn't the PCs be a lot more expensive?
Yeah, they'll roughly double the cost per unit, and then that doesn't include support staff as well.
Aren't PCs available to our students in our labs? Don't we have them already on campus in labs and other spaces where they're using them for course-specific kinds of content?
Correct. At our middle school and especially our high school level, PLTW is largely based around PCs, our business side sort of.
Scott, were you finished?
No, no. You had, you said you had another, which brings up another question. What were you thinking?
Well, I just know that Chromebooks M365, I, I just don't see that out where I work and, and the people that I do business with, I just don't see it. My concern is just ensure that we're using the right device with the right software. And if you took, for example, a PC with Windows or Microsoft 365 where you do not have to continue to pay for upgrades under Windows 365, it's automatic all the time versus maybe what we're using now, are we paying for upgrades all the time? Versus Microsoft 365 on the PC, you won't have to.
But with Google.
And that's a, that's a cost savings is what we're looking at.
With Google, there's a one-time fee upfront that is for the maintenance of, for the management of the Chromebook itself. So that allows us to secure it and also track it and assign it to students and performance filtering, those types of pieces. There's no additional cost beyond that.
You don't anticipate Google to come up and start charging us for additional fees and that down the road, since we're going to be jumping into this, this Google Chromebooks, you know, pretty heavily, I think.
They've changed their pricing models over the year and they've committed to keeping that free tier, which is where we pick this up at, where we have that maintenance and monitoring, and we have that Google suite of applications. They offer other tiers that we don't take advantage of.
Thank you so much.
Scott, did you have one other?
No, I was just curious now about the difference between Chromebooks and laptops, and then we get into that discussion, but a Chromebook is like a tablet, you know, my company, my company is going to using the tablet more often than the PC now, because I think that's where, and we're not in education either. I think the Chromebooks, what I heard, the Chromebooks by the counterpart, all districts, not just in Missouri, but countrywide, I mean, countrywide, geez, nation-wide, uh-huh, are using Chromebooks, right?
I was better able to speak to some of our national counterparts, but we for sure saw that in the state of the game.
Bruce, can you clarify, these are Chromebooks?
Yeah, the devices you're utilizing are a quick.
Yeah, okay. And how do you, one of my questions, you said 20% of the day elementary students using it, 30% of the day, so how is that tracked?
Yeah, so again, I'll take you back to our shifted supervision model, right? So we have executive directors that, what is that, what was the number, 575, I think, for the first semester of visits that they're on campuses? That is something that, as they walk campuses, as they're visiting with principals, that is a conversation they are having. And I can tell you, when they see a classroom, as they, they circle through time over time and think, "The last time I was here, that was happening," they are having conversations with those leaders and with specific teachers, because we have identified, here is the appropriate time for that to be utilized, that we really want that to be utilized for your adaptive software at independent practice time or as guided practice, right? Direct instruct is not for that, et cetera. So we've, we've outlined that and are following up as we are at campuses and visiting as are our coordinators when they go out into the field.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And Kelly raised his hand. Do you want to jump in now?
Absolutely. For starters, thank you for this presentation, for circling back and hearing the conversations that we had, and make some changes, adapting to those changes, and then coming back and saying, "This is where we are. We're not done yet. We want to make some further changes." I mean, this type of presentation is exactly what, what I would love to see continuing more of, as this is fantastic communication between the board and the staff, and the response is definitely noted. In addition to making the recommendation that, so last year, the response was, "We hear you, we're going to take the, we're going to prevent the Chromebooks from going home K through 5." And now we're about 12 months later and we're saying, "Okay, we're not done yet. We're listening further and we're deciding that Chromebooks won't go home six through eight." I think that's fantastic. So I wanted to get all of that out there. I do have a couple of questions, so that, I don't want that to negate the fact that I see a lot of positives here. I want to make sure that I express that. One question that wasn't mentioned tonight, but has come on my radar recently, because I know we discussed it last spring, about the access that students have to YouTube through their Chromebooks. It was my understanding that that would be disabled, and it's my understanding that it has not been. So what, do we have a policy around kids being, students being able to access YouTube, be it either in the classroom or at home, whether that needs to be one or the other or both?
So I need to go verify this, but I believe we have blocked it at this point. Prior to that, though, we did have a GoFundMe restricted filter that was available through Go Google and through GoGuardian, our Chromebook filter. But I do believe that, that we have blocked it at this point. So let me go verify that and I will follow up on that.
It's not been, I know for a fact. I would like to follow up on that.
I'll take that and follow up on that.
Slide 12?
I think we're using up your million questions right now.
In the presentation, but I made it, I know we were under the opportunities for improvement. What's the plan to address those things?
I think as we, as we look at the integration model, obviously, they're going to give that I think as we, as we look at the integration model, obviously, they're going to give that model, will give us information about time on devices, what student expectations are within that, and how you deploy that, as well as the digital citizenship pieces and the training pieces, right? So that, the implementation of that model in totality will give us some of those opportunities that you already see there. I think revisit middle school device strategy has already been addressed, and then pre-print resource availability. If you hang on in a couple minutes, you're going to get a full presentation on the next set of adoption materials that are coming through, and the prioritization of that. So much of the implementation of the model is going to support us with digging into those opportunities and making some determinations about the additional next steps, which is why it lived on that slide about implementation, right? How do we train our leaders? How do we have dialogue about what integration will look like? And then what does the teacher professional learning look like that goes with the implementation of the model and the curriculum?
So this ISTE, within that that we implement, will have a digital citizenship curriculum? We already have a digital citizenship curriculum, correct? I was looking on the website, something about that we have some, but we're going to, I guess, modify that under this new ISTE.
We have several places that we have pulled together digital citizenship that is being taught in a very siloed format. So do we, do we have what I would define as a full-blown digital citizenship curriculum? We do not. Which is why the importance of having one services.
This ISTE, then, is it, is there information that you can, I guess shy of me just going to the website and trying to figure it out, is there information that they've shared with us that you can share with me, or is there board members that can show, like, whatever it is, that ISTE plan or ultimate...
Just kind of implementation timeline or...
Everything that they preach about their product. Good. Slide, like 14 or 15, maybe? That one, yeah. So Tech Integration Committee, 31 members, all of them were teachers?
We pulled out the teacher numbers specifically, right there.
Okay, within those others?
Uh huh. 12 teachers, eight leaders, eight principals, across early childhood, elementary, and secondary.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, a big piece of what we were honing in on here was the kindergarten Chromebooks versus iPads, right?
That was a prioritized recommendation that surfaced from the committee.
This committee?
Correct.
How many, do you have any idea how many of those 12 teachers were kindergarten?
I do not. I don't have the individual 12 teacher breakdown. There was kindergarten representation on the committee.
Okay, so it just, this is the thing that jumps out to me the most, is I'm really excited about the direction we're going with being responsible with the screen time devices in kids' hands, and what's most concerning to me is on the younger end, in terms of availability that they have to YouTube or screen timer, whatever. Everything seems like we're heading in that direction until we say we're going to spend money to replace the iPads with Chromebooks at kindergarten. I realize they're not going home with them. I, kind of like Steve was mentioning, I'm certainly in the camp of, I'm not a teaching professional, but I'm certainly in the camp of, I have a hard time seeing why K through two really need the devices much at all. So I'm wondering, that's what I'm really hung up on, is approving, putting more devices in those classrooms, albeit a different type of device. So I'm wondering, out of those 12 teachers, how much do we really engage with kindergarten teachers who know intimately what that daily instruction should look like, be it through the teacher versus on devices?
Bruce can give you a lot more specificity, but this kindergarten device conversation has been ongoing for the last 10 years. I mean, from the first integration model and putting devices in classrooms and SPS, ongoing, and now surfacing again here. Like, what is the right device for how much time for our youngest learners has been an ongoing conversation, and we engage with kindergarten, groups of kindergarten teachers very frequently. I think they would say, and I won't speak for all of them, but based on the conversations that I know IT has had and the conversations we've had on the curricular side of the house, the understanding that they need those devices as we are assessing them, specifically on our universal screener, and some of the work that they can do, very simply, with those devices is a small fraction of the day that is spent in kindergarten. Like, that is the place, I think, if you were to walk K classrooms across our system, you would see them least utilized. In fact, those devices sit in a cart, often outside of the classroom.
So is the recommendation to provide a Chromebook, one Chromebook for every kindergarten student that we have?
Yes.
So if it's such a limited capacity that the kindergartners need it, and I could see how, I mean, I guess maybe they need it for Galileo, but I really struggle, I think there's a lot of kindergarten teachers, kindergarten teachers that would say, I need to work with that student one-on-one to really know what their capacity is. I mean, I can't just put them in front of the screen, I mean, which a lot...
I think a lot of our teachers would say that.
Yes. So what, do we really need one Chromebook for every kindergarten student? If the amount that they actually need the thing is so minimal, why can't those devices be shared across classrooms?
And that's definitely a piece of feedback we've heard over the years. So when we began our technology rollout in the one-to-one, we had classrooms sets, and within just a couple of years, kindergarten teachers were asking, it's very difficult for me to plan around having only eight or 10 in a classroom when I'm trying to create station rotations, or when I need to do full-on assessment and testing. And that's probably why we've heard that the most, I would say, I've heard that from principals as well, of difficulty of having reduced ability to have every student on it, limits how they can plan their days. So that's probably where I've heard the most feedback around why we still want to have a one-to-one situation, even if it means that we're not utilizing it 50% of the day, if it's more of that 10 or 5% of the day, it allows the teacher to really own how that date.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready to move on to Danielle?
I think Miriam had some questions, so I'll let her go.
Kelly, are you, so we can move on?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sure, read that, check.
Very much so. Thank you. So these are the Chromebooks that the high schoolers have, the ones that we have, that we're using?
They have a different model from yours. It's an 11-inch screen, I remember technically, and these, I think, are 13-inch screens.
Okay. So the way I'm understanding it, the kindergartners get the touch, and then everybody else gets the same Chromebook, or is it different when it goes into secondary?
It's all the same from the first time.
Okay. How much do these Chromebooks cost per unit?
Last year, I think we spent about $225 per unit, when that makes sense.
How much for all of it? Like, the case, the warranty, the whole package?
So they come with a one-year warranty, and then we are self-maintaining. So our technicians actually are the ones that provide the repair services.
I remember you saying that you do the repair, and then you charge that, you get reimbursed for some of that.
Yeah, it's part of the student.
I remember that.
And then the license I was referring to earlier is about $30. So all in on the unit, we're about $250 to $260, depending on where...
License is $30 for the Google Suite. Okay, and I appreciate that slide. You have Microsoft 365, but we don't use that. What would the cost be if we used Microsoft 365?
We do currently use some 365 at our high school level. We currently use Office, but as they're phasing off, we'll be moving to M365 next year, so we're all licensed for it as part of our Microsoft.
So the high school Chromebooks do come with a Microsoft 365 license?
We can utilize it, it's not built into any of our curriculum right now. So right now, we still utilize the Google Suite for all productivity, and the only place where we're using the M365 are in those dedicated computer application courses.
I don't mean the dedicated, I mean the Chromebooks, the one-to-one Chromebooks that the kids get, does that have Office Suite?
We don't currently utilize that on Chromebooks.
Could we use Office Suite? And so if a student in 10th grade said, I want to do Office Suite, they can have that?
We haven't gone down the route of allowing individual selection around that, so that there's consistency.
I guess I don't understand, is it on the computer, or is it not on the computer?
Not currently on the computer.
It's not currently on the computer, and if we wanted to do it, it would just cost us.
There would be no additional cost from how our licensing is currently set up.
Okay.
Licensing is always...
I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So the teachers have different technology than the students?
Correct.
So they're using...
They still, our teachers still utilize Google Workspace for productivity with students.
So they're using the Google Space and not Office Suite? They're using Google Suite and not Office Suite?
Teachers are actually utilizing both. The teachers are utilizing Microsoft Outlook for females specifically, but then they also have access to the Office Suite of products.
So when they're doing an Excel, and they're working with their students, they're using the same Google, or are they doing Office?
They're doing Google.
Okay, so they're able to communicate with the students? Okay, got it. How long do Chromebooks, I know you've told us this before, how long do they last?
So where we're heading with the recommendations here, we would anticipate a four-year lifecycle.
Four-year lifecycle, okay.
How else, can I interrupt that?
Oh, sure, sure.
Compared to a laptop, is that the same, four years? Okay, that's all I had to say.
Well, the laptops, you mean the Windows-based, is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
They come with four-year warranties.
Yeah, we purchase four-year.
So I thought you said it comes with a one-year warranty.
On our Chromebook.
Okay, so for the staff, you're getting the four-year warranty. Okay, so here's the other piece. When you're cloud-based versus it's in the hard drive, like a Windows-based, there's a big difference in software. So you actually, because I've seen even today's K-Cop, you have to purchase software to support Chrome, is that correct?
No, not, I want to put it that way. So when we purchase a Chromebook, and we purchase that license, every Google user with an SPS can use the productivity suite from Google. So that includes the word process...
I'm asking about the software that you have to get to support Chrome.
There's no additional software that's required for that.
So if you moved over to Windows, you would still have to make all the software purchases you currently do, or would you cut some of them out?
Yeah, we'd still have to purchase all the items we currently have.
Okay.
And more than likely, what we see in other districts that, the few in Missouri, they purchase other pieces as well, so that's another one of those cost increases. A lot of it, you know, we create a cloud, that's cost.
Okay, I, before switching to a different set of questions, I do have some of the concerns that, actually greatly the concerns that Steve brought up, because, you know, we talk a lot about college and career-ready, and we want our students to, our graduates to be ready to go to any job and college. And I hear you, Scott, when you say that you're getting ready to move over to Chrome, but I'm pretty sure you probably are going to be using Office Suite and not Google Suite, because the rest of the world...
Probably Office.
Yes, Office Suite. So everybody's using Office Suite. Jobs use Office Suite, colleges use Office Suite, and I just worry that our graduates aren't going to be competitive in the job market, and just as well-prepared. They're very savvy, it's, you can figure out how to switch Excel from Google to Office, a lot more, harder for me, but I think it's less hard for them. But nevertheless, there is a transition period, so right out of the gate, they are less competitive. And I did want to point that out.
Can I make out here on that?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but it's not just Springfield Public Schools, it's nationwide, right?
It's local.
Is it nationwide?
It's just local, it's just local that we're using?
I'm thinking about our need for technology, I'm sorry, I was, my comment was not relevant.
Oh, yeah, okay. I was just wondering, I guess my question is, is everybody, all education systems, Missouri-wide, that would be competing for these jobs, or nationwide competing for jobs, using Google Chrome? So everybody has the same disadvantage?
Okay, let me, can I, okay, I'm going to take the floor back.
Yeah.
That's actually not correct. There are many districts that don't use Chromebook, and I think that it behooves us to look at, the coasts have tried the Chromebooks. Chromebooks were first, first arrived on the shores of Los Angeles County, so you might want to look at where they are right now, which is they've moved away. So Chromebooks was the biggest scam on K-12, because they were cheap, right, Bruce? That's why they were very popular, they wanted to, it was easier to implement, easier to purchase, and it's, and it's gotten a foothold.
Right.
And in order to be, to look to the future, and I don't know, Google could very well start charging fees, but, so John was, I dragged you in, now I see that I should have dragged them in, and I had asked you when I went to the presentation at MSBA, because I stuck around and I communicated with the folks from Blue Springs, R, I guess it's R4, 5, 6, I can't remember. Have you got, did you communicate with them, because they use Surface and they were selling that, and they explained why they moved away from Chromebooks? Have you had an opportunity to connect with some of the districts in Missouri that did choose, did elect to move away from Chromebooks?
So we surveyed districts in Missouri, I think we had about 30 to 40 responses total off of that, and it was, I think, only two districts that were utilizing Windows devices for the one-to-one. Almost everyone was utilizing it in that supplemental range that we show here.
Right.
In terms of Blue Springs, I've engaged with them over the years, and they have utilized Microsoft products in different ways over the years. That's been a community expectation a lot of times, and as they looked at their financials, they built that into the budget. And as we've kind of looked at the balance there of how can we ensure students that are going through high school have access to those devices, while balancing that teacher request of having consistency, that's where our strategy has really kind of come together.
I see. I do, I do feel passionate about, you know, this is an ever-changing field, it is, technology's rapidly changing, and I just don't want to be caught behind. And, you know, I understand that there's computer labs, you know, in PLTW, in engineering, in design, in media, and journalism, but those are, the kids can't take those home. I think it would be really nice for students to have an opportunity to check out more sophisticated technology that does actually have Office Suite or Adobe. It's not for everyone, I think you can get through high school with a Chromebook and be prepared, but there are some students, and I think this becomes an issue, because we have different income students, and there are students who do get sophisticated technology from their parents. And I think that it's important that we allow other students who could excel, who would, who do need the same, you know, because you...
And Miriam, I think what you just said is very important when we're talking about removing technology from K to two, because you're right, different students have different experiences at home, and if they've never, or had limited technology exposure prior to them reaching third grade, we're going to have a problem with those students.
I'm going to come back to that, but can I finish whatever you say?
Absolutely, yep.
Or was I? I was talking about the days of the schools, people being, you know, we keep our buildings safe and secure in lockdown, and so you can't stick around, it's not college, you can't go to the library. I don't know, something's changed. I remember staying in school afterwards and being on the grounds, but it doesn't work like that, you have to be supervised. And sometimes the work in an engineering class, or a journalism class, or a business class, or Excel spreadsheet, whatever you're doing, accounting, you can't get it done. And so I would like to see an opportunity for our students who have those needs, whose parents can't meet those needs, to be able to check out more sophisticated technology. So that's something I want to get on your radar. And then, this won't surprise you at all, and I'm going to, I'm going to jump right into what you brought up. So I'm going to push back on, you asked that for the last decade, there's been this debate on what is the right device in kindergarten, and I think that the right answer is no device is the right device. You said that there's a very small fraction of time that they're being used. I do not see assessments as a reason, you can certainly print assessments. I'd like to see those funds being used for, I don't know, puzzles, supplies, more teachers, smaller classrooms. And I categorically disagree with you, that you need to have exposure to screens in K, pre-K to two, to be ready in third grade.
Do you think a third grader taking an assessment test, who has had access to technology at home, taking an assessment test on a device, a third grader who's had access to technology is going to do just as well as a third grader who's never held a device in their hand because their home doesn't have electronic devices?
Most homes don't have...
That's a yes or no question.
Chromebooks, yes, actually, I do.
Do you think they would do exactly?
Yes, if they're...
Like, they'll just pick up the device and know how to use it?
They do.
Interesting, okay.
Yes, I absolutely do. In fact, I think they're going to be ahead of the other kids, because they will have developed, they would have interacted more with their peers, and I do. And those homes that do provide technology are not providing Chromebooks. So I don't think providing a Chromebook is going to put them in an advantage. I think that it would, I don't see myself as being able to support any form of technology in pre-K, early childhood, kindergarten, first and second grade, I just don't think it's necessary for their success as graduates for the workplace or for college. Now, on that, I do, I do have a question, yes.
Because our discussion started at 6:07, we're now at 6:41.
But everybody's had an opportunity, I don't think I, maybe I should have...
Sherida and I have not had the opportunity yet. You have had the floor for like 20 minutes.
But I've been interrupted numerous times.
Okay, go ahead.
That's what we need.
Go ahead and continue your questions.
I think you should...
Finish your questions.
Be able to finish your questions, yeah. This is a very important topic.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven? It's the, it's like the very last one, yeah, that one, there you go. So if we, if we moved first and second grade Chromebooks up from ninth grade, would it suffice?
For...
For ninth grade. You said it's the same device, right? Are they in good enough condition? If we wanted to, we could choose to move those up?
So you, just to clarify, you're asking, can we move those devices and not provide a first and second grade to ninth grade?
Yes, yeah. Would there be enough of that?
The devices that we currently have in our classrooms are still supported for another year.
And they would have the capabilities that we're looking for to provide the educational needs for ninth graders.
So the only concern I would have there, that I would voice, is that as, the reason why we do a ninth grade refresh, that's the device they keep through their career at high school.
What year?
And so if we're providing that device that's only got another year of support, then we're going to have another year where we have to come back and provide those devices. So that's the strategy around providing a new device at ninth grade, that then, once they're a senior, that device is now surplus and that's our fourth year.
I understand. I'll ask the rest of my questions at a different time, thank you.
Okay, I just have one question. On the mobile hotspots, what percentage of those are routinely checked out?
So that varies quite a bit, especially with their snow days and other needs. We monitor that and provide a report back to the schools every month of here, the devices that have low usage. In general, we see somewhere between fifty and seventy percent of those devices at any given time, but with the churn rate that we always have, there are schools that want to help and we have to kind of shift those in there.
But there's a sufficient number there?
I have one question. For the dedicated ed tech staff, they would fall under curriculum, and their goal would be to help curate software catalogs that align with curriculum. So is it a full-time position at both, at both levels, or is this a part-time position that functions with current curriculum or as curriculum is going through a process of revision?
Both. So yes, to full-time at both divisions because they are doing it for all content areas. So when you think about, it is a little bit Wild, Wild West-ish related to platforms and software. We have put lots of, of plans into place, but we need dedicated people to ensure that what is being used does, is in alignment, and those same people are at the table when we are bringing on new resources to say, here's where we maybe see a gap or a place that the curriculum could be enhanced by the use of technology, and here's the appropriate place to put that. So it's, it's both and. Things that are going through cycle and things, really the primary work of these people in the coming year is what is being utilized in the content areas in my grade level bands, and which of those are currently in alignment to the system, and which do we need to stop using, or are there gaps that need to be filled? So that's the initial work, and then it will move to the cycling of adoption.
Follow-up, is ed tech a company that's specifically for this kind of technology, or are we just calling this position ed tech?
We call education technology, is typically what this person is called in other systems. And if you'll think, we, we had a group of those people when we went one-to-one that have been absorbed into other places, coaching, learning specialists, whatever it might be in the system, and there is no one now shepherding that work. Thank you.
I have a couple of follow-up questions if possible.
Scott?
Go ahead.
First off, the, so these, these amounts that we're talking about, the ed tech positions and the, like the Chromebooks in kindergarten, are those going to be separate items in, or are we asked, asked to specifically approve those items as part of the K-Cob, or?
The purchases of the devices is part of K-Cob, but not the personal.
So like each of these expenditures will be a separate?
Um, can we go? It will be, it depends on the company where we're purchasing, I want to make sure, like the carts should be one company, right?
The carts would likely be one company.
As is the professional development.
Yeah.
And then there was another one that actually showed the Chromebook purchases, right? So, 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 for example, I have no problem with my vote voting for ninth graders refreshing, but I'm going to have a problem with kindergarten putting Chromebooks there.
So you want the amount broken down?
Can that be split in a way that we can vote on those separately?
We can work on that, we can work, let us work on it as we go back and the person who handles that.
And, and will that be next week on the K-Cob, or is that a future K-Cob?
No, it's on the 28th. So it's on the K-Cob now.
Our study's...
Yes, and so then we just need to go back into the person that, that does the K-Cob, probably gets entered separately is what I'm thinking, but I don't want to say the wrong thing.
And the other question is...
I'm sorry, I'm just clarifying, you want that broken out by grade band?
Kindergarten and ninth.
Or K and ninth grade, separate.
Yeah, and, I mean, I can make the request now, I don't think that should be on consent agenda. I would like to vote on that separately, because I don't want to have to say no to the entire consent agenda for one.
We'll make a note of it. End of list.
And then, the other thing, so this ISTE, as, as part of that program, does it require, does it have guidance or require young learners to like meet certain thresholds before they have certain access to Chromebooks? Like, for example, it would make sense to me if, like K through 3, there were computer labs where they were learning keyboarding before they actually, like, like what you were saying, preparing them to actually take the map. There are certain things like digital citizenship and keyboarding, it seems to be common sense for us to be giving those tools to the students before we just give them the Chromebook. So does, that ISTE program, does it kind of lay out a strategy where it says, we need to be, teach them how to use these things before we just give them, give them to them?
So I'll include that specific updated information in the information I send about overarching ISTE understanding, so I'll include that part in with it.
Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Sharita?
Follow-up question to what Kelly just said. Undesi has these computer science standards for K through 12, do we, do we follow these or these, and where are they put in to practice these K-12 computer science standards?
Those are new, and yes, that we have places in which those are being implemented. And again, one of the roles, similarly, of that person will be the crosswalking of those with the integration model that we would be adopting, right?
So, yeah, so on these DSE standards for computer science, they do have specific learning standards for kindergarten through second grade.
My grade, yeah. We would crosswalk those, much like what we do historically.
Can those things be achieved in a computer lab? Which things? Those standards that if we wanted to be following DSE standards, or do we need a one-to-one in the hands of kids in K-1 and 2, those for eight levels?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something to consider as we think about how our curriculum is designed, right? So we wouldn't want to just say, we're going to, we're going to have all of this happen in this place, because what we're really moving away from is that siloed teaching of anything technology-related. We, what we heard from the committee is we want an integrated model that clearly spells out how the use of this technology is enhancing the experiences of kids. So we want that to not be something that now I'm going to the computer lab and I'm being taught specifically about this. We've had that model in the past, right? And so moving that into the places where they're gaining content and they can see the connection between why I might need to be digitally savvy in this area and how I can utilize that to support the content that I'm currently taking in, our teachers and the committee felt was a better approach.
Did in the committee, was it ever discussed, or did it ever come up, the students' experience with technol, technology outside of the classroom, if it made a difference for the teachers? Did that ever come up?
I think what came up relative to home environment and our kiddos was more on the side of what, what Danielle was alluding to about those that don't have access and, and that we support some of that appropriate engagement in the school context, that we take on some of the responsibility of that to support our kids because we know they're going to encounter that across their life. That was the context that it was brought up in.
Okay. Any other thing, or can I wrap up here, or Scott, you want to say one more thing?
Mary and my pal, just if I interrupt.
Your apologies accepted.
And, are we, you're tactfully attending with the partners in our education and the businesses in our community. Okay, and are you hearing from them that our students are coming out not prepared?
No, that, I mean, that's not what we're hearing. Of course, overall concerns as it relates to the number of students that we, as we increase our overall student achievement performance, but not necessarily that they're not ready, it's just asking for more opportunities for students to have hands-on opportunities as it relates to various levels. So it's a balance, and it's, it's just like, your organization uses one type of device, your organization uses another one. Sometimes it's just about the preference of the particular organization. You know, my part of life, we use Teams, and now we use Zoom here. So it's similar to, it just depends on the industry, but you, one thing about our young people is they adapt very easily and quickly, and it's ensuring though, keep in mind, as you even think about the ninth grade, is making sure that they have access, but as they move through 10th through 12th grade and they move into those specialty tracks, we want to make sure whether it's business, the project lead the way, the journalism classes, that's where they're going to get more and receive more hands-on, utilizing the various devices, whether it's an Apple device or Mac device, I don't know all of them, but the various devices. So we want to make sure we have those opportunities across our district at our high school level.
And I, Dr. Lathan, I can say, I'm not sure, I knew you could, kindergarten, but, but that being said, you have to have them for universal screen, which is one of the...
Right, and it's not just a universal screener, as you heard them say, as you think about the learning stations and students have an opportunity when they're working on independent learning. But I want to make sure, our teachers and principals have done a great job this year of truly paying attention to screen time and usage and ensuring that there is more direct instruction, where the teacher, classroom teacher is leading that. But then when they're working with students individually, or students are working independently, it's just having access. And it goes back to what Bruce shared earlier, when they were out in the classroom, but if we're both third grade teachers and we're sharing a cart, then we're going to have to make adjustments, and then we have to make sure that Denise wants the cart, then I have to plan, and that was, I think, some of the concerns, and I heard that in other places also, is just making sure when I need it, and if I need to truly adjust my lessons, I created my lessons for the week, but I noticed that I need to make adjustments, or if she already has it signed out for Wednesday and Thursday, then I can't make the necessary instructional adjustments that I need to make if I don't have access. So those are things that come up and come into mind when we're thinking about having still the one-to-one access throughout the school day.
Dr. Lathan, do you think that you will give any consideration or some serious consideration to providing a fleet of more capable devices for the upper-level high school students to be able to check out, who can't get their work done during the work day and...
Well, like I said, we'll, we take all of this feedback, everything is a serious consideration. Once we receive feedback at Agenda Review here, we go back and we debrief on the comments and questions that we receive, and then we look at how do we go back and approach that, or how do we answer those questions? And then we have, we take it back, but like I said, we have a committee, that we go back to the committee and say, well, this is the feedback we heard, what are your thoughts around that? You know, because our committee members have strong opinions about, hey, this is where we, how we feel about different things. So we will take all of that into consideration and we'll talk about that.
Is it possible to print Galileo or whatever assessment we choose for the younger kids?
No, it's, it's on the device. And we, I mean, that's been very clear from day one.
The answers, because when they were here presenting, we had some sheets with...
Right, but for the assessment that they take, where we get the results district-wide, that is computerized.
Okay, so maybe wrap this up. I'm going to just throw something out here, Dr. Lathan, you can tell us if this is possible, but I, I feel like that we are board members, that we have limited classroom experience, certainly with early learning, and we are talking about some important decisions here that will affect the, we're talking about a decision that would limit our teachers' ability to do their job. So if we should make a decision that we, this board, decide no technology for kindergartners, then our kindergarten teachers will have to manage that. And so I would like to hear from the experts in the classroom. So if there's any way that we could hear from some of our kindergarten teachers that are doing the work, as to their thoughts on not having some type of technology with these littles, that, how they feel about that? Because we are not the experts here. We may have our own individual bias and our own individual feeling about how this looks for, especially for little kids, but I'm not sure that we, we need to hear more, I believe, to make a decision in which we say, no technology for kindergarten.
Just like we've done before, right, with the middle and the end of the year testing window at the last board meeting, we're happy to compile a survey and, and pose some questions to kindergarten teachers about if they support...
And maybe even hear from some of the kindergarten, some kindergarten teachers that would come share with us. And, and then the idea of the sharing, having been a teacher many years in the classroom, we had times where we had to share equipment, and, and it is something you have to plan around, and it's, you know, you do it because you want your children, your students to have the opportunity to have that experience. However, when you have one set of microscopes and you have five people teaching biology class and you have to make that accommodation, you, you can do it, you do it, teachers do it all the time, but it, it's not ideal. And if we can provide what is ideal resources for our teachers, we want to do that. So, but simply taking away a teaching tool, which is what technology is, it's a resource, it's a teaching tool for teachers, I would like to hear from them, what they have to say about that.
Bruce, can you give us a scope in the future at some point, how much money we're going to save from Chromebooks not going home and the 20% use? Because I think that they're going to live longer, and we could potentially save money, right? Because a lot of the damage occurs outside of the classroom, not that it can't happen.
Yeah, we've seen a reduction in repairs at our elementary levels.
Can you give us some update, like, you know, as we... Okay. Okay. We, anything else? Okay, so we have several other items to go through. Is there anything else there?
No, no, we're going to move on to the next one, but I want to, the majors and I are going to tag team.
Okay.
Dr. Majors, where's the, I'm going to control the clicker.
Is there more to the technology?
No, it's just, we have long presentations and we're going to kind of work through them. Because everyone had an opportunity to review the presentations in advance.
Which presentation are we going to?
You're going to curriculum resource, Doc.
So we're going to skip over four and five?
No, did we skip over?
Four and five.
Oh, no, 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 four, I'm sorry.
We could do that first.
No, 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 no. Crystal, you have a few more minutes. John, come on up, please.
The interesting thing is, then I wondered about this.
I went, I went into teacher mode, did y'all see that?
The interesting thing of the technology, before we did contracts, agreements.
Usually we do everything before.
Everything before.
Contracts, agreements, changes, and bids, we're moving on.
All right, good evening, board. I never thought I'd be spending Valentine's Day with you all, but happy Valentine's Day.
Last one here.
Yeah, yeah. We did not receive any questions around the K-Cob. Do want to give one point of clarification, so with the technology, we're so used to everything being on K-Cob, but for, for our practice in the district, anything over 500,000 is already a separate agenda item, so that actually will be a separate agenda item.
So none of, I looked at this again, none of that stuff in that presentation is in this K-Cob, is it?
That's right, because it is a separate agenda item.
And so I think those things will be a separate agenda item that we will see in the next meeting, okay?
So I just wanted to provide that clarification. But if you have questions on the K-Cob, I'd be happy to, do my best to answer them for you. Terrific.
I did ask questions and they were answered in email.
Okay.
Moving on to 5.01, policy adoptions revisions, John.
All right, so we had six policies from last month that board wanted either some changes or clarification on. So I'm going to run through each one real quick, just kind of a reminder of what it was, and then if you have questions at the end, we can do that. So the first one, B, DDL, release of information. This was around sunshine law requests, and specifically, MSBA recommended much of the information under custodian of records to be struck through. We hear from you, is you want to keep that in the policy, so the update reflects keeping that in the policy. DJF-2, this is purchasing. On this one, this was where the minimal threshold for having to get competitive bids was recently changed by the federal government, was a big bump from 3,500 to 50,000. Of course, the bump was overdue, it should have been incrementally increased over time, but... but it, it wasn't. So one big bump all at once. Part of the language that was struck through was a language under competitive purchasing that specifically says that employees are expected to contact multiple providers before making a decision regarding purchases under, and then it would be the new amount of $50,000. So that would be the second sentence under competitive purchasing. So we unstruck that and kept that in there. And so that would still be our expectation. And then there was just a correction in the next to last sentence on page one. Originally in the board pack, or in the, yeah, board packet, there was a typo and it said $50,000 or under, and it should have been $50,000 or greater. So that's been corrected. GCPB, and as you have a reminder, GDPR is similar, and we added language around early separation notice incentive. And the feedback we received last time was to make sure that that language was identical in both. And so we have amended GCPB to be identical to GDPR. So no changes to GDPR. But now, what, we did catch a typo in both of them and under the section under early separation incentive notice, where it says non-contracted employees, and then it has in parentheses, it originally read at-will employees not bound by contract, which includes most certified staff, and that should have been most classified staff. So that has been corrected in both notices. Okay? All right, so that's those. Policy IF, curriculum development. At the top, where it talks about the four standards around curriculum development, again, the MSBA recommendation was to strike through that. The Board indicated they wanted, I'm sorry, going on down, the bullets at the bottom. The recommendation was to strike through that, Board indicated they wanted to keep it. So that's been maintained in this policy. And then finally, JHG, there are no changes from the last time, but this is the one where we needed some clarification. In particular, on page three, the section harassment, spanking, or protection of persons' property was all struck out. So we want some additional clarification around that. Also, under the explanation at the beginning, the second paragraph is a little bit confusing, so we've got clarification on that as well. And so two updates on that. So on that harassment, spanking, protection section, it's crossed out. Basically, legislation was passed this last session that basically said if we suspect that there, that excessive force occurred or corporal discipline that was excessive occurred, we must report that to the Children's Division. We are not allowed to investigate that simultaneously, which is what we were allowed to do previously. That it goes to them, they make a ruling. Okay? So that was that change. Then you'll notice the section of, two sections above that that say reporting allegations of sexual misconduct by school employee, that whole section was struck through and that ties back to that second paragraph. So previously, under the Amy Hester Law, which you, that may sound familiar to you all, when it came to accusations of sexual misconduct against a staff member, districts were not, were required to report that on to Children's Division even if they felt there, it was unsubstantiated. Okay? With the change that I previously mentioned on the corporal discipline, the law also removed that requirement around sexual misconduct. Our attorneys believe it was inadvertent, yet it was still removed. So districts now have the discretion again, if there is supporting evidence that the sexual misconduct did not occur, they have discretion that they don't have to report that on. So that section being removed is just because it's no longer a legal requirement. Now, I will tell you that it is very likely that if there's a, a sexual misconduct accusation against a staff member, we're going to report that on and put that in the hands of law enforcement to investigate, but that legal requirement is no longer there. So that's why that's...
It's not a legal requirement, but for policy requirement, would we want to still have it in writing so that change of leadership knows that it's a part of the legal, the policy requirement for our district even if it's not a legal requirement?
I don't know that I have a perfect answer for that. I mean, I think that's a poor decision, but now keep in mind, the language being struck through specifically references as set forth in law. And so we would at minimum want to remove that amount.
You'd start to, you'd still be a mandated reporter if somebody...
Still mandated reporter. Yeah, at the end of the day, we report it, but essentially, you know, there are times where you may be fairly confident that what is being reported is, did not occur and is intended to try to get back at a person for one thing or another. So prior to the change this last legislative session, we didn't have that discretion, it got stripped away. But now that discretion returns. So, but at the end of the day, we train our people, if there's any doubt, you, you report it.
Okay, so I was confused, then it got cleared up, and now I'm confused again.
Yeah.
So do we have to strike this or can we leave this on?
We can leave it on, but we would have to strike through the part about being a requirement of the law, because it's no longer a requirement of the law.
It doesn't say that it's a requirement by the law, it just says that the district...
You go to the fourth line, there's a statement in there that says as set forth in law. So...
In this part, it says that set forth in law? Is it on the top of page three?
Page three, second paragraph, fourth line.
As set forth in...
It reads, it reads, "If a student reports alleged sexual misconduct on the part of the school district employee to an employee of the district, the employee who receives the report shall immediately report the allegation to the Children's Division as set forth in law." So we would at minimum take that part out, because it's no longer set forth in law. But we could, I mean, we can leave the rest, yes, if the Board desires to leave the rest in there.
It's also in the second line, right, in accordance with law?
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, if it's, if it's not counter to our, if it's not going to cause any problem, I would like to leave the language in and just remove the by-law language.
I agree.
I, I agree.
Okay, cool. We will run that, run that by attorney, make sure there's no issue. I don't see that it would be.
Check with our attorney.
Okay.
Does he come back to us on the 28th, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Hey, any, I did?
I have...
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh.
I don't...
My first question...
You probably handle these policy by policy?
Oh, I just have a question on one.
Okay, then, no, go ahead.
Actually, I have a question for you on one. We had, on the purchasing, we had previously, you had raised some concerns about the giant jump from $3,500 to $50,000, and I didn't know where you were on that.
So that's on my list, so I guess I will ask questions.
Sorry, you go ahead, okay.
Yeah, so that, what is this, policy?
DJF.
B, DDL?
Uh, no, DJF.
Nope, that's not it. DJF. DJF.
I'd like to propose, as we talked about before, I'm uncomfortable with just raising the threshold from $3,500 to $50,000. It's a huge jump and I just don't feel like that's really responsible for us to, to go that big and to take, take the reins off to such a large degree. Although I do recognize that things have changed, things have gotten more expensive and this amount is too low. So I would just like to make the recommendation that we change that $50,000 to $10,000. It would substantially increase where we're at. Sort of picking a number out of the sky here, but I also think that 50 is too high. So I'd like to just suggest to the rest of our Board, if we could change that to $10,000, I think that would be a more responsible way than jumping from $3,500 to $50,000.
Can you, sorry, this kind of goes hand in hand, because it says appropriate informal purchasing methods. Can you just talk about, what does that look like in the department?
So currently, with the $3,500 threshold, our informal purchasing message, methods are that we require three quotes before a purchase is made. Now, there are always times where you can't get three quotes, but vast majority of the time, you can. So we require three quotes that are then presented for consideration, and then we make the determination. Sometimes we'll send them back for additional quotes if we feel like there's better pricing out there. But that's, that's the procedures.
I assume there is some sort of approval method?
That's correct.
That a person has to go through? It's not as though I need to purchase something and I run out with my card and purchase it?
That's correct.
So if you don't get three quotes, you're just going to re, resolve to the two quotes and go from that process, is that right?
Depending on the reason why, you know, so if it's just because I was too lazy to get three quotes, we, we make them get three quotes, right? But there are times when it's a product that is so limited in nature that there's just minimal means to get those three quotes. Or it could be you can't get people to return, you know, the information as requested, those types of things.
I do remember the presentation that you provided last, or the explanation on that. I thought it was well presented. But that is quite a, a, a jump. And it would probably free you up and your staff. However, I do think that we should have a little bit more accountability. I kind of agree with Kelly and, or $15,000 might be appropriate rather than going to $50,000.
I had a little clarity, just, just a little background, because this is something that I do deal with, is getting quotes for things and having employees to get quotes for things. And my, just to clarify, my concern with this is you can often just get very comfortable with, with a group or a company that you're working with, and it's so much easier just to run it back and keep it going, keep it going. Before you know it, you're 10 years in a relationship or longer and costs keep going up and there's no sort of accountability measures. And anybody, I'll do that as an owner even, not even, I mean, I'm just out of, sometimes just, I don't want to mess with it, or I can trust this people or they're doing a good job or whatever. But it's just good business practice to constantly be going back on contracts and getting multiple bids and forcing that competitive nature to the contractors. And I just think that we owe that to, as fiduciary, whatever, leaders of this district, I think that we owe that responsibility to this process, which is why I'm suggesting raise it, not as much as they're recommending.
Yes, I'm really confused. It says employees are expected to contact multiple providers before making a decision regarding purchases under $50,000 currently. So we get, we're getting multiple quotes even though it's below that? Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay.
Contacting them is different than getting a quote?
We, our internal processes are, we require a quote. We require three quotes, over $3,500. Currently, it's under $3,500. If it's under, if it's $3,500 or more, then it goes to competitive purchasing procedures. Yeah.
So what's the difference between an informal and a formal bid?
So it's, really, it is the bid process, right? Which is what delays oftentimes being able to get things in place. Now, there's good reason for that, like Kelly mentioned, right? To try to get the best price. One of the advantages of having a higher threshold is our ability to support local businesses. All right, so here's a good example. Those of you that were on the Board last year, you may recall receiving an email from a local company around t-shirts. T-shirts were over $3,500, right? So we had to put it out to bid, which means we had to take the lowest bid, and it wasn't someone locally. So a greater threshold, let's say like $50,000, we still would get multiple quotes, but it would allow us to say, we're going to contact all of our local t-shirt companies and give them the opportunity to give us a quote and then take whoever is best priced locally. So it does give you some leeway in supporting local businesses that we may not have as much leeway currently. So that's the flip side of it. And, I mean, we can talk about pros and cons on both sides of that.
Either way, it's competitive. One is competitive purchasing that under a certain threshold that allows you to go out and get bids quickly. The other one is the competitive process bidding that goes out in our larger, kind of, push it out to all the places anywhere. And so, you know, I personally think the $50,000 threshold is an appropriate amount. Was this preceded by, you said the federal government changed their standards?
That's correct. So that, the current policy is predicated off the federal standards of $3,500 threshold. They recently changed that to $50,000.
I think based on the process of being competitive either way, one, allowing for smaller amounts to be, go through a, a smaller, faster process is an appropriate way. Either way, we are still doing something competitive. That's my thoughts.
You know, we're fortunate at SPS that we have an entire purchasing department that are like hawks, which is really good, right? Not every district can say that. And I, and I do think we have to watch out for complacency, because it really is easy to get comfortable with the vendor and just say, I'm going to use them all the time and not get competitive pricing. And I know that Dave and his team really do stay on top of that. Gary might help me. I think that the only time we don't require that competitive purchasing is it under $1,000? What's our, like, if someone building needs to go out and buy markers or something like that, we don't require them to get three quotes on markers. Is that the amount?
Do they get $100,000?
Under $1,000, yeah. So that's our current threshold and we would not be changing that.
I, I do hear Kelly's point, and it is, it's a point to consider, but I, I do think that this threshold is appropriate for where we are in our current economy in that it still allows for competitive process either way.
I agree. There are two things here, you brought up, the delays, like a formal bidding process, I've been through this a lot. It can really delay a project. And second of all, I love that it supports local businesses, people who are taxpayers paying this community, we're supporting them. Glad that having to go out to, I got a call from somebody last year, somebody in Fayetteville, Arkansas, you know, got a bid over me for, you know, over a couple thousand dollars and had a bidding process, but we are supporting them and those who are paying them.
I want to comment on that. I just personally don't believe it's our responsibility to see ourselves as the distributors of wealth to the taxpayers in the district by keeping it local. I think it's our responsibility to guardians of the taxpayer funds and make sure that we're getting the best impact we can onto students' educations. So to me, the keeping the dollars local thing isn't really within our purview. And in fact, I think it can get us in trouble sometimes by not being the best stewards of funds.
And granted, this, we are not going with the lowest bid, we're going with the best.
Good, right?
That's true. I mean, you always have the flexibility to go with the best, so lowest and best. There's some discretion. More often than not, we go with the lowest bid.
I understand that.
It's still a competitive process, in my opinion, and so I'm still for it, so.
Yeah, you're still getting three quotes.
So I'm still confused, so I'm trying to figure out the difference. Let's do the t-shirts. So if you do the informal, you could just go out there right now and go to three different t-shirt companies and get a bid locally. But the formal competitive process goes out on the worldwide web? Am I understanding?
We use a system called Ion Wave.
Okay, and that's like multi-state or is it within Missouri?
Anyone who signs up for it, anyone in the country can sign up.
Oh, okay, I understand.
And then they get a notification for the types of things they want to bid on. So when they sign up, they select if it's this product or this whatever, I want...
The reason it takes longer is because you're waiting on people to bid on it and then for transportation?
You got to advertise it for a set amount of time.
You have to say this is up for like one week?
Or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to understand the difference.
I, I think we're to the point on this where it will just come before us, and those that want to vote yes will vote yes, and those that vote no will vote no.
Can we split the difference or is that something that we can consider?
What do you mean, split the difference?
Well, I don't know.
I propose changing it to $10,000.
I mean, split the difference, 25, 30 to...
I don't know that we have any rationale for that.
Well, there's pros and cons, like John said, and so we've heard some pros and we've heard some cons. I'm just proposing a solution that would, I think, give some of the pros and, and avoid some of the cons.
I think our solution is a board process, is that we have it where it is and we have a vote and majority, we vote yes or no and we see what the majority is on this. And I think that's how we do business. Yeah, I think that's how we do business.
Please suggest. Kind of like we suggested to, to keep one paragraph or to strike other paragraphs. It is our policy, so we can put our hand in it and change it, as we have several other policies.
Well, I think it's pretty simple. I've put forth a suggestion to say, uh, I'd like to change it to $10,000. If anyone else agrees with that, feel free to do so. If not, then we'll just vote on that, so.
I would agree with that. Why, can I ask you, Dan, why such a small amount when this economy is such in the place that?
Well, it's at 3,500 now. We're tripling it.
And it's been theirs for how long? 3,500?
John, what do you think would be a fair?
I don't.
Well, I'm asking his opinion because he's experienced in these matters.
Well, let's leave it at 50. The, the difference is on the prior paragraph, there was clearly board consensus to do something different. Here, I'm not hearing board consensus. Let's just wait till next week and vote on it. And if somebody wants to make a motion to change it and have a second and have a vote, fine.
We're splitting here, is what, is what I'm hearing. We're kind of splitting here, so we have a lot still to accomplish.
Uh, okay, so, we can move past that one. I had a, a question about B D D L. Yes. Um, the last paragraph. Can you provide some narrative on that? Because what I'm reading, I want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, so, my understanding is this was to provide clarification. And MSBA has received a lot of questions around an individual's board member, board member's right to information versus the whole board, right? Okay, keep in mind, this is in the context of our policy around Sunshine Law or public, availability of public information. And so, the clarity that is being provided, and there's case law that supports this, is that an individual board member acting in an individual capacity does not have the right to any more information or access to more information than any other resident of the school district, okay? Now, as a board, as a majority of the board, you do have a right to more information, and that information would be provided in that direction. Now, I think it's important to clarify, this does not mean that board members can't ask for information, especially as it's pertinent to specific agenda items or things that we're tackling, okay? Probably the primary example would be to, you know, each of you does not have a right to access personnel files and student records. Sometimes, board members go like it and think they do, but you do not. Now, as a board, if there's an employee's personnel file that you feel you need to review, or a student record, then it, by majority, vote of the board that would come forward. So, that's probably the biggest, biggest one. But, so I think it's just to provide clarity on what is available access to an individual versus the entirety of the board. The reality is, whether that's in there or not, that's still true. It doesn't change the fact that that is the case. So, I think it's just putting it in there, clarity.
I think it's too vague. If it said personnel files or student records, I'd be fine with it, but the way it's worded, that's not how I'm interpreting it, so I'm not, I would like to have that struck.
And I'd like to support that. I can get behind that.
Struck or reworded?
Either or.
This is an MSBA recommendation from the MSBA attorney. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And although it might relate to personnel records and student records, that is not the only thing that it's going to apply to. Those are just two examples, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, then I'm against changing what, um, somebody who has far more expertise than we do in drafting board policies for districts, I, I would prefer that we just leave it as is.
I agree with Danielle. Just because of what she's saying in terms of, this is written by attorneys, MSBA, is that correct?
Correct.
This is equal.
I think we have to be careful, careful to put forth policies that, that limit the job that the electorate.
Well, as John mentioned, this isn't limiting anything. This is, this is law right now. We're just documenting it in the policy.
This isn't law right now.
He just said the case law supported that. It is law right now.
Well, I had a conversation with John about this, because I had some concerns about it as well, and I asked specific questions and scenarios that I was not comfortable with.
Well, I'm not hearing concerns from the board about changing this, and in the interest of time, I'm going to suggest that we move on unless there's a consensus from the board to change this.
So, let's talk with our superintendent.
We'll follow the pleasure of the board.
So, our superintendent is our employee, John.
I am not, um, I am not feeling the need to change this board member access because it does align with Sunshine Law and the policy put forth by, put forth by MSBA.
Well, but the, it's a proposed, you said you're not willing to change it, but you're not willing to change the change?
I don't want to strike it.
Okay.
I just want to see what happens to a board, a district specifically, to end up relinquishing any authority, because that's what we're here for, on policies. Even though, uh, as Danielle pointed out, you know, you're, you're talking about attorneys and that, uh, and MSBA. Well, MSBA isn't running our 12 school district. We're the one making the policy. I don't like it in there right now. I don't want it to restrict and tie our hands anymore, uh, because as Maryam had indicated, the electorate put us here in order to make these decisions.
Can you help me understand?
So, I'm, I'm just in favor of not having that in there.
Can you help me understand what it's restricting us from?
I just want to ensure that we're not taking more authority away from the district, uh, the Board of Education, that's what I'm saying.
Can you help me to understand what authority we're, we're losing?
I think what we're doing here is, sooner, sooner than later, what happens if we start piecing little bits by bits, and eventually, what's the reason to have the Board of Education?
But where is? I can give you some examples.
No, I want to understand this particular wording here. What is, what does it say that is removing access, taking away our authority?
I, I, I gave specific examples to John. So, but, for example, if something's not on the agenda, does that mean we can't ask about it?
This is about Sunshine Law.
No, this means that, for example, let's say today we had, um, technology. Let's say technology's not on the agenda today, but I had a question about technology. Well, in order for me to be able to ask that question, it's not for me, it's for the whole board. I want everybody to hear the answer, the way we've done it. But I see this as limiting me from asking those questions, because, well, that's not the work at hand, so.
That would be an incorrect interpretation of this policy.
Absolutely, that's not how I interpret it at all.
That is how I'm interpreting it.
And it's poorly worded, because I agree with Maryam.
That's how I'm interpreting it. The other, the specific example I gave, may I give that a specific example?
Yep.
Um, because I said, uh, John said, "For example, you can't ask to see my contract." I said, "Oh, well, that's interesting, because I just asked to see your contract because I didn't know that you were under contract and we're hiring somebody to replace your position." So, in that capacity, I asked for it. He says, "Well, in that capacity, well, then that makes sense." But then I thought to myself, "Well,"
These conversations.
But, I got policies, because, because.
No, but I mean, these conversations you're having with John about his contract, or are these taking place?
No, I'm, no, it, I'm not asking you about his contract. I said, "For exa-" I said, "Give me an example where this would apply, that this would limit." He said, "For example."
You're using that as an example.
This is an example.
Okay.
And he said, "Well."
For, yeah, for clarity, what I said was, an individual board member can't just demand a copy of my contract just because they want it.
Right.
It have access to that beyond just the general public. Now, it's available, but it would go through the Sunshine Law.
Right.
Request process. Now, if there is a bigger conversation amongst the board, hiring my replacement, let's say, then it would make sense, right? For maybe that request or that contract to be made available. So, that was just an example I threw out of, but again, I think Sherina made a good point. This is in the context of Sunshine Law release of information. That's it. So, just because someone is an individual board member does not mean they can demand whatever information they want and get it and have special privileges?
Beyond.
Over the average person in the public. The same guidelines for Sunshine Law release of information apply to an individual, and that's what this is saying.
Yes, that's how I interpret it.
So, like, let's say I want to ask, what is our discipline data currently? I'm just making that up. I can still ask that?
You can all, as a board member can always ask the superintendent, board president, for whatever they want to ask.
It has to be board action. The quorum has to want to ask in order to ask. I can't just individually ask about, you know, technology or discipline or, you know, I'm just going down this, you know, student nutrition, you know, I.
You can ask for that, and I, I want to be very clear on that. And at the discretion of the superintendent, that could be provided. And I think Dr. Lathan has shown that what she does is, when that individual asks and it's pertinent, she then gives it to everybody, right?
You can ask.
Yeah, but what this is referring to, though, is someone feeling like, because they're a board member, they can access whatever they want without going through the proper channels. That's really what it's referring to.
Right now, the proper channel is that we address our questions to the superintendent, and the superintendent answers our questions and gives us all the information and data, and if we want more data, either it's provided for us or it's not, and it's shared with the whole board. That's the process we have right now, right?
Right, right, but it doesn't mean you can't ask for those things.
I, I know we don't want to have carte blanche to all the information, because that's protective information. I do get that.
Sure.
I guess it's just how you read the policy. I don't read it that way.
Okay.
Um, okay, so, it sounds like, we'll see if that goes anywhere. Um, the, I did, one more thing to point out, and I pointed this out last time, uh, policy I F. Um, under Curriculum Development and Reviews, second paragraph below that, this is a situation where we've removed these two pronouns, his or her, designee, in a way that actually changes the meaning of the statement. And.
Is that the last sentence in the second paragraph?
I, okay.
Okay.
Yes. Because now, we don't know whose designee it is. We don't know if it's the superintendent's designee or any other person's designee. It's just a designee. This little thing here just looks to me like, we were talking about, this is an MSBA attorney or whatever. This looks to me like an attorney that was set on removing pronouns and accidentally changed the meaning of a statement. Um, so, for that reason, I think we should, uh, leave that his or her.
I'm going to ask Kelly, so, when it says appointed by the superintendent or designee, what do you not understand about that?
I don't know whose designee it is.
The superintendent.
The superintendent appointed.
I know it is if it says the superintendent or his or her designee, because it's referring back to superintendent. If it just says the superintendent, appointed by the superintendent or designee, that designee can be designated by anybody. It's not the superintendent's designee.
By the board.
Anybody. The point is, the only reason that it appears that was removed was to remove the specificity of the pronouns, but by doing so, it actually altered the meaning of that sentence.
Doesn't alter the meaning, but.
I stand by it does, I explained why. If you disagree with that, it's okay.
It's in the sentence prior as well. Responsibility for this review process will rest with the superintendent or designee.
Okay.
It wasn't removed from there, it was already there, but, yeah.
I think they just kind of carried it through to have some consistency in that next.
I mean, is there an opposition to adding their designee?
That's what I think. I think their designee makes.
In both places, or their designee?
No, I see no reason to change it. I'll just leave it that.
Wait, what, to add their designee or?
Leave it as his or her, not strike his or her. I see no reason to even make a change there.
So, do you need to go back?
There's no, there's no obvious reason to even make a change.
Do you have an opposition to their designee?
Yes, I'd prefer it remain as it is. I see no reason to change it to their.
What about the sentence prior?
Well, the sentence prior, so now, do we need to bump up to the sentence prior and put, the process will rest with the superintendent or his or her designee there as well?
I'm going to stick with their, but.
Because that one, that one is not specific to.
It should be added there, for continuity.
Or taken away for continuity.
But then we don't know whose designee it is.
Well, we already didn't apparently know on the previous sentence either, but.
It's been there for a long time.
I knew.
I see what you're saying.
Just make sure it's.
Well, if it helps clarify it, I say add it, leave it in, and add the his or her. Or there.
Or there.
But his or her.
Or there.
Is fine.
It's not really.
I'm not going to debate over which one it should be, but I do want to point out that, in the context of a school setting, the designee is always the designee of the superintendent.
Absolutely.
Always.
It has all.
No matter what level. So, even if it's five levels down, it always, it always goes back to the superintendent.